I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. First order of business is pledge allegiance to Charles Virginia.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got two items I'd like to add to the agenda, first of which is on board pack, which is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And it is a request from the statewide commission to celebrate, to to put together celebration for the two hundred and fiftieth, which will be twenty twenty-six. So is there a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll move second.
And let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Now those in the room.
Aye.
Aye. We'll make that, let's see. We'll make that seven A, okay? All right. Right, I don't have to add that, the second one. My apologies. So, next up, public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Hearing none. Let's move on to item three and as to approve minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll move second.
Have a second. Good. Any comments, questions, suggested changes? I had none.
Good to go.
Good. Let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item four, Finance Director, Mary Jane Malvasi. Mary Jane?
Good morning. I'm here today to report as of the end of September, already three months into our fiscal year. Just also, just wanted to add at the beginning that our audit is, auditors have been here. It's going extremely well. So hopefully we will be more on track this year than than last year. So I will start with revenues. We are fifty-three percent collected, which is just slightly less than we were this time last year. Not much more to report from last month. Only thing I wanted to share with you is that last month, the 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 number for park and rec included that two, that extra that we're taking from the thing. And it was, it was shown on the revenue side and it should have been an offset expenditure. So that has been corrected. So if you had noticed that last time, you know, we notice things after we, you know, report. But other than that, other than that, I take questions on revenue.
And notes early in the year, any concerns anywhere?
No, not at this time, no.
Any others? Sort of expenditures, I guess.
Expenditures, again, no concerns this year. I will note that as I did last month, that there are a number of departments who have to pay a majority of their bills upfront, like information systems, insurance, benefits, that type of thing, which is why those percentages are often higher than where we are right now. There's also a number of departments that are showing higher because of encumbrances. But otherwise, none of the departments are in trouble at this point.
Again, once again, early in the year, fire is over just a little bit. We got one through years there.
Are you talking?
Fire department.
Expenditures over, uh, no, uh, you know, pretty good. They're twenty-seven point eight. You know, they have quite a few encumbrances, a hundred and sixty-six. They are down from where they were this time last year. So I think, yes. So we're monitoring that a little better. We do have some ARPA that we had applied towards some of our salaries. Fire Department is one of them. So that has already been applied for the three months.
Just to ballpark on how much we applied. Don't worry about it.
I, I don't want to give you a number off the top of my head. I, I think I apply, you know, about thirty thousand a month, but it's to different couple, few different lines. I'm not sure which which line is that. I can get you that information if you'd like to know.
What I was actually getting around to was our favorite topic, our replacement salaries. And they're at thirty-one point eight percent at this point. So that's my concern is that they're already running over what what was a increased number in the current budget cycle.
Correct. And we are applying some ARPA money to there. So we'll be watching that very closely.
So has, has ARPA money already been?
Yes, for the first, yes. So I take the.
What's, is there a way, you don't need to do this right now, but get the true cost of what the replacement salaries are, the net of the offset?
And could, we'll be talking about that during budget seizing specifically, not that we can't do beforehand, but you know, this, as we do each year, we have to start thinking about having a, taking the reliance on ARPA funds off of more departments. So.
Assume the call volumes continue to remain high?
Yes.
Anyone else on expenses? Okay. Medical?
So on the medical side, still through September, I am showing no payments from stop loss. However, in the month of October, we have met with the stop loss company. And we are going to be on track with paying, paying for stop loss, the agreement we made with them. I'm paying July and August and October, September and October, November, November and December and December, and then starting January, we'll be back to a monthly cost. Also, we do have a Zoom meeting with them because with, when everything was under Anthem, the net cost came to us. They covered their portion and we only paid our portion. Because we have have a new company doing that, we are paying the full amount of all of the claims that are stop loss. Now granted, we're only at thirty, you know, forty thousand. But that information, we will then be billing the company and they will be reimbursing us. So it's a it's a lot more steps for us, well worth it for the savings that we're incurring. But we're working our way through all of these steps. So the reimbursement hasn't come through, but again, I'm only looking at forty thousand dollars so far. So I'm not as worried, but we, the consultant and I do have a meeting set with them to to figure out how that billing will go. So hopefully by the time I come next month, well, you know, it'll, it'll be up and running and I'll have, you know, even more to report on that. So, you know, our projected surplus and deficit is showing one point two. It it has no relevance at this point. Correct, because we are three months behind paying stop loss. So that, that number does, like I said, has very little relevance at the moment.
But in those numbers, claims are only at seven forty-five.
Correct. And as, as always, they're always a little bit lower the first few months of the year. Because employees are paying their portion of the deduct, the deductibles, they tend to, tend to jump up, you know, by mid-year, where those deductibles have been extinguished and now the town is covering, covering those. So seeing the lower amount, you can compare to last year, they're relatively similar.
Okay. Any other questions?
I know, like, you know, in the transition from year to year, the large claims, they max out and then they, they reset. Were there very many of those this year?
That are.
The ones that had to reset? I mean, if they were already maxed out or?
Uh, no, well, there's one claim, two claimants actually now that are over the one fifty and only, so.
But I think Charles was asking, were, were claims that are, you know, that started in twenty twenty-three fiscal year and now have gone at July one, it resets to zero again?
Oh, yes. Everything resets to zero.
How many of those, I think, is what you're asking?
The question is, were they comparable to other years? How did we fare?
Well, it's about the same.
So there's no jump either way?
No, it's hard to tell right now because when we end in June, you know, we have twelve months of people that could possibly get up to those numbers and July one, we start from zero. So I know. And we don't necessarily know who these members are. So it's hard, you know, it, it's hard for me to say I have the same, you know.
No, it's, you know, to me, it comes into a factor of some of the programs that we're trying to encourage, encourage to help our employees, that type of thing. And that's where you would hope it would long term be reflected. But you never know.
Yeah, it, it, it's hard, right, because some of the reasons for these, you know, people being in stop loss probably aren't going to be helped by our wellness. It's, it's, right.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't just the wellness program. It was, like you said, training programs and our attention to safety and, you know, workers, all that stuff.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying that some of these claims that are recurring year after year are I don't want to say beyond our help, that doesn't sound good, but you know, we're, I don't think any of our things are gonna help them.
But we should still continue.
Oh, absolutely, because, because what, because our goal is to avoid bringing more people into that.
That's right.
You know what I mean? So we're, we're trying to, to get them healthier before they get to this point. Unfortunately, once they get to this point, that's something that is usually, you know, a long term.
All right, we're good on, on medical. Is it that time of year quarterly reports or?
Quarterly reports, yes.
Capital projects?
Yep.
Any significant changes or cleanup of the?
Not at this, not at this time. We do have a number of projects that I am trying to, to close out. So for the school, we go back to twenty fourteen, but you know, it wasn't too long ago, we were back to like yes. And on the town side, we're back to, to fiscal year thirteen, but you'll see that most, they are coming to an end. We're trying to use those up. When I talk to the departments, Steve can tell you, I'm always trying to use up, you know, let's use up the money we have furthest back. So we're still trying to, still trying to do that. But at this point, I don't have any that we're closing out, but we're always working towards that goal.
And Mary Jane?
Yes.
Just so, I mean, we've, we've looked at this and this issue's come up in the past. I mean, to the extent that there are remaining funds, let's say on a school project, there, and you said you're always encouraging people to sort of use that money. It's gotta be within the definition of that bonding authorization, right? I mean, it's just not randomly applicable.
Yeah, great, great point, Lou. Yes, you know, you have, we need permission to use it for anything outside what it's authorized to be. You know, if we're working on a kitchen in Baldwin and something happens at Leek, you know, we can maybe make that transition to say, okay, as long as it's a like-for-like fix, we, we can do that. But I'm in conversation with our bond council at all times whenever we have that. When I talk about Steve's lines, for instance, you know, we, we've a few, every few years, we put money aside for energy assistance and projects. So we want to make sure that we're using the oldest ones first. And, you know, we're not using up last year's money. We want to use up money from five years ago. So I apologize. That's kind of what I was referring to at that point.
Fair enough. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Any specific questions on any of those capital projects? Let me just pick up one.
Yep.
On the town side stuff, the first one up, Public Works Infrastructure Improvement. We're sitting on a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars worth of unexpendited funds, right?
Yes.
Do we have any specific plans for those? I know that's a question for Dave, but and what kind of flexibility do we have with moving those monies around as a significant portion of that fund balance is coming from the reconstruction of Waltham Hill Road to Hubbard Road? Has that been officially closed?
Right. And, and the re, the reason that we have this fund balance is because we did receive additional funding in twenty twenty-three. So we had, we had bonded up to an extent that we thought we were going to get. We did receive more funding. Janus worked hard on, on getting that. So, and so we do have, you know, as you'll see, three hundred and fifty thousand left in construction of new road to Nut Plains. At such point, when we decide that we're not doing a project like that, we will close this out and we would transfer that money to another project.
All right, anything further? Capital stuff? Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Secretary of Human Resources, Nick Goldblatt, six dot one, to consider and act on an amendment to the part-time employee's sick leave policy to account for mental health days. Nick?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. I've given you some background information on this, which has been provided to us from our labor attorney, Chris Hodgson through Birch and Moses, that Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Law has been amended to allow for service workers, which is a very loosely defined term, to be able to use sick days for emotional and psychological well-being, otherwise known as mental health days. And we would have to discuss that with each of our unions. I don't expect to necessarily do that until next negotiations, but our part-time sick leave policy is, is pretty specific and it was recommended after a discussion I had with them that we update that to include this. And that's what you have before you. If it's passed today, a copy of this would be sent to all of our part-time employees who are eligible for, for the paid sick leave policy. And we'd be made part of the onboarding package for anybody else coming on board that would fall into this category. So I think it's a simple request, but I need your approval.
So these are part-time employees who are not part of a union?
I could, it would apply to those part-time employees who are part of the G E A because they have no other sick days and they have been under this policy since the Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Law went into effect several years ago. And you adopted this policy. So this falls under them. It's basically a very minimal sick leave policy. Just to refresh your memory, someone has to work, first of all, six hundred and eighty hours. They have to work a regular, regular schedule and get up to six hundred and eighty hours, having to have to work an average of ten hours per week and most recently completed a calendar quarter. So it doesn't apply to our seasonal employees. It really applies to our regular part-time employees. And then they can only earn a one hour sick leave for every forty hours they work, up to forty hours a year. They can only use forty hours a year. They can carry over forty hours. It never goes above forty. And so it's, it's, it's limited in scope, but it does have some, it is, was put together from the Connecticut Public Act that was passed several years ago. And now it's just being amended. And we would amend our policy to keep in line with that.
I, I may have missed something in your explanation.
Sure.
Why are we doing it now for part-time and you're going to wait for the full time?
Um, because I, I'm not looking to open up all the union contracts to discuss this necessarily. And I don't know that we have to get a further explanation from the labor attorneys as to whether this will apply to certain individuals who fall, our part-time employees fall into the service worker position. I'm not sure our, our emergency services people fall into that. Our supervisors may not fall into that. So it's, and, and quite frankly, I think that for a day here, a day there, our supervisors have been very generous in allowing people to take a sick day when they feel they need it. But because this particular policy was put into effect, mirroring, mirroring, if I can say that right, the, the Connecticut Act, I want us to, and, and advise the council to also update this. And so it's still complies with the act that we are saying that we are, we put this in the first place for.
I, I got it. Thank you.
So at this point, the only action we need to take is on, on the part-time.
Correct.
So the legislation does not require it to be done to full time?
It says we should be looking at collective bargaining agreements as they come due.
All right, but does this apply to those part-time workers who are in the union?
It will apply to those part-time workers who are in the G E A. This only union that has part-time workers is the G E A. And they are already under this policy because they have no sick leave po, no sick leave benefit from meeting contract. Their sick leave is dictated from this separate policy.
So in, in order to put this in effect for those who are members of the union, do we have to adjust the contract now?
No.
Interesting motion. Yeah, is there a motion? A second. Further comments or questions? Let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Item seven, Facilities Engineer, Steve Nytor. Seven dot, come on down, Steve. Come on down. Seven dot one, discuss to take possible action to protect B and P construction under the Gordian Capital Regional Council of Governments bid for roof replacement at Town Hall South. Steve?
Good morning. Time for a new roof at Town Hall South. So I reached out through Gordian, through C R C O G, and got a price of eighty-three thousand eight hundred and four dollars to strip the roof, replace the roof, gutters, and fix the edge around the flat roof. So it'll be a complete job.
Right.
So I would like to get this done.
Is there a chance to get done before the snow flies?
Yes.
And again, this is off the council government's.
Correct. Sourcing. Yes.
Great. Have you had any familiarity with these folks?
Uh, Cliff has, Cliff has used Gordian and this particular contractor multiple times and is very happy with them.
Interesting. On the scope of work, the job title is Gilbert Historical.
Well, I had to go through Historic Society first, so that was listed as the top. So they, they followed through with that. But check the address.
Yeah.
It's true.
And there was a slate, I didn't, I didn't know, maybe you all know, I didn't know there was a slate roof on there.
Yes. They made a match the town hall years ago. So that's what I'm doing. I'm making it go back to matching what the town hall looks like now.
So it's going to be real slate?
No, it's back, it's going to go to asphalt, just like this building. Same color, same. Trying to make the buildings match.
Yeah. Not to take up time, but just curious, is there any use for the old slate?
Problem over there is there's so many hips and valleys that a real lot of cuts and they break in. So by the time you take all that time and labor to pull it off gently to try to resell it, there's not going to be that much that's usable.
Take it over to the labor.
You know, you see this scaffolding's up already. Okay, so, all right, is there a motion? I'll move it. Second.
Second.
Any further comments, questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Second Federici.
Aye, thanks for staying on it, Steve.
Thank you.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Okay. Thanks, Steve.
You're very welcome. Good day.
You do the same. All right, item seven, discuss to take possible action on the proposal for the town to fund the Guilford Fair Parade. De Palouse and D Jacob are here. Want to come up and just, we have the correspondence that was forwarded to us last Thursday. Just give us your, you want to do the Reader's Digest version? Or you can do the extended version, whatever you, whatever you feel comfortable.
Okay, well, I took over, in fact, formed a committee to do the fair parade after the Rotary said they were not doing it anymore. So this is, this past year, September was the third parade that the committee of six of us. It is a town committee and the money is, is flowing through the town accounts. And, and what has happened is that the amount of funding that we've gotten from such places as the Guilford Savings Bank, from the Guilford Agricultural Society, has decreased greatly. And we have had to try to do fundraising, which is difficult with a small committee. And we are not a nonprofit, so we can't solicit funds that way. And we have plenty of people power to gather the people for the parade, look at the logistics, all of this. But not enough to do the fundraising. And the town, as I said, is, the money is already flowing through the town account. The town is paying the insurance. The town select board has one thousand dollars in their regular budget. And so for all of these reasons, we are hoping that the town will take over the rest of the funding. And there were, we, we submitted two, two different numbers. One is what it would cost. Well, so Fife and Drum Corps is getting paid for the parade is the majority of the cost. That's the way they exist. And we have paid them. We have minimal expenses for a banner, the porta potty, things like that. The other expense has been, we've paid for the school bands, which has generally been Adams and the high school. This year it was Baldwin, actually. And we've paid the, that, that goes to the band boosters and the P T O, P T Os for the four elementary schools have, had, have traditionally gotten paid for their floats. So the first proposal for thirty, thirty-one hundred to thirty-two hundred, that, that range, is if the town does not pay the schools or the P T Os. And if you do pay the schools, then that adds another, could be two thousand. It, it depends again on what floats and what bands participate. So that's more or less how we got where we are.
May I have one comment? I'm sorry.
Search it.
I'm the treasurer.
Yep.
D Jacobs. G S B used to underwrite the whole parade when it was a different group of citizens running it. And then as G S B and their goodness decided to expand their support of other nonprofits, et cetera, that decreased in the, in Rotary's term. So when it got to not doing a parade in twenty-one, Deb formed a committee and that's how we started to look at other funds. And different town businesses have been supporting it. But it's different when you don't have to worry about fundraising versus when you do. And I think we all signed up to put on a great parade for the town. It's a great attraction to downtown.
So where do you show the other income? Because the bank still gives you something.
They have given us nothing since two thousand. Twenty, twenty twenty, there was no, no one, uh, no parade. They, they, twenty-five hundred in twenty nineteen. And, yeah.
This gives you a historical over the last.
And since twenty twenty-one, the, the Guilford Savings Bank has given nothing. The Ag Society in twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen gave two thousand. The last two years, they have given five hundred. Rotary has given a thousand, five hundred. The, um, do you have another one? Page Hardware, Frank's Package Store. The foundation have given money, but the.
I know that the foundation is now handling the donations from the bank. So do you think that the money from the foundation is actually the bank's contribution?
We got a, we got a thousand and that compares to twenty-five hundred in twenty nineteen and six thousand.
The bank had gone to zero. I know we dropped it.
Well, we, we didn't get anything directly from Guilford Savings Bank. We got it from the foundation.
Right, because the foundation is kind of handling the bank donations now.
So the G S B wrote to Rotary and told them that they were decreasing and going to zero. That's what they had. Under their auspices of providing funding to the Guilford Foundation, and we have recognized the last three years that the Guilford Findet, Foundation and G S B have been a supporter at that level, but we've had to apply to the foundation, which is how we track where the check comes.
Okay.
Are you all set, Steve?
Think so. I'm going to follow it up. I think so. Because I just honestly did, I think the bank definitely reduced it, but I didn't think it had gone to zero. So maybe it isn't. Maybe this money from the foundation is from the bank, but you, I really should have to track it from the, from the source.
They applied, this past year, the bank gave three thousand to the Guilford Foundation for sponsorship. That's where that one thousand dollars came from.
Right, okay.
All right, so questions I have, do we anticipate that the Rotary and the Ag Society will continue to contribute five hundred? As well as, can we assume that the Guilford Foundation will continue to put a thousand in? And I, I guess the question is, have they been asked about their continued participation?
No, no.
Okay, I would, I would like to see that done prior to us assuming that with taxpayer dollars. One of the things that, you know, this is also known as the Guilford Citizen State Parade, which, which is, I think, one of the things that was great about this is that it was, it was a bottoms up, it wasn't a top down. Which was, which is, I think, one of the things that was great about this is that it was a, it was a bottoms up, wasn't a top down. So um, you know, again, I think we're prepared to fund to the degree that we need to. Um, but if there are entities that uh, are still willing to contribute. I don't think that we should forego the opportunity of giving them the opportunity to say yes or no.
That's where I was gonna go, first of all, I wanna thank you for taking this on a couple of years ago. I, I know what a struggle it was just to find people to to grab hold of it and go forward, so I wanna thank you for that and your committee. Uh, and I do, you know, to to Matt's point, I I think the parade's gotta go on. I mean, it's just a big part of our community fall in our community. Uh, you had mentioned that as a town committee, you're not a nonprofit. And I appreciate that fundraising or development is. Is a different project in its entirety compared to just running the parade. And I, I, you know, I've been involved in a couple of the organizations over the years that have helped fund it. And I can appreciate the uh, enormity of it and the complexity of just constantly having to do the fundraising, never mind running the parade. So I think we do have to find a way, and I was struggling with what you were saying as a nonprofit. And being able to raise funds, uh, as a town committee, you know. What are the mechanics of raising funds and donations?
Just, oh, you need to, I'm sorry.
That's, that's.
I was just gonna say, if you need to be a nonprofit, then you can't apply for certain things. I think that's the right point.
We, we can't say that your donation is a, is tax deductible for us, you know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that part of it, uh, but I, I'm, I mean. You're asking the foundation to to commit to, you know, their piece of the town and I know. Uh, that makes some sense, cause many organizations funnel things through the foundation now. Because the foundation knows how to distribute money, I, I think that's the frankest way to put it. Uh, so, can you, are you allowed to ask for money to?
Well, yeah.
If I can comment, I'm the treasurer, so it's a, so each of the organizations that we actually budget annually. So it's an, it's a new annual request that we make and the foundation. Um, sets its priorities in terms of what it's going to fund, in terms of sponsorships and those sorts of things. So there's no guarantee, for example, when we restarted the parade, it was twelve fifty. We've had to reapply each of the last two years and gotten a thousand, but we weren't on the priority list. Just from the things that they wanted to sponsor. So we can ask, but it's a new round each and every time, the Ag Society budgets annually, same request. The Rotary budgets annually, same request. So we can go ahead and ask those people who have supported us, but I think it's a little bit more difficult. When they're making their decisions based off their annual budgets, not looking out three, five years, will you support us on this manner?
Is there a way, I mean, like I said earlier, I really want the parade to continue. And I, I, I don't have a problem with using taxpayers' money to. Underwrite guarantee or whatever, but I don't wanna discourage uh, donations. So what would be the mechanics of establishing something like that? Cause I agree that, that town committee doing fundraising, I'm not in love with that, that concept.
Um, one thing that certainly happens, could be a letter over my signature. Uh, asking these organizations to please consider continuous work uh, for the effort. Uh, and try to get some kind of uh, input, get, get some kind of commitment prior to us having to uh, do the budget, right? But I, but I, but I think the question, the, my question is, is the town willing to underwrite whatever the costs are? That of any contributions that come in.
I don't wanna say that without having some, and I don't wanna micromanage it, because I think the committee's doing a good job. Uh, I don't wanna, you know, open entity.
Well, when we got that first stage, I mean, it still exists, I know we're getting another one, there was private contributions towards that.
Well, I'm thinking of like fireworks.
There was private contributions towards the three-fifty uh, celebration, but I believe the town paid for some of that as well, so. That sort of mix exists.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to is, you know, whether it's expanding the committee, I mean, it's not actually a town committee, right?
Yes, it is, yes, we were appointed by the towns, Warren.
Well, maybe that's the answer, then expand that committee and have specific people just for the fundraising part. It just, you know, whether it be you utilizing a letter under your, over your signature or whatever. Uh, but actually, you know, defining the fundraising part, you know, with the understanding that the town will underwrite it. I mean, I read both of these proposals and. Yeah, I'd like to say, okay, we'll just do it, but yeah, that's unfair to the taxpayer to.
I would just say, you can ask the youth advisory group again, I see they gave it, gave it to twenty nineteen. But those um, are.
That was, that was when Rotary was doing it.
Yeah, and and Al Jacobs was running the fundraising, you know, Jacobs was the mentor.
Right, you could just, yeah, you can, um, that's an organization that's really run by high school kids. And they solicit um, uh, requests for grants every year, evaluate them and then distribute the funds. So you, Rotary doesn't really get that directly involved with that. So I, I, I'm, I'm on the committee for YAG and I encourage the parade to uh, ask for money. Because the, one of the um, uh, the big mission of youth advisory is to give money back to organizations. In Guilford or regional that benefit the youth of Guilford, so you know, this is a perfect uh, candidate for that, so.
I don't wanna get today into the specifics of how to fundraise and who's giving what, that type of thing. Uh, I, I think we're looking at, bringing a picture, Susan, you were gonna say something.
A, a few things, yeah, yeah, and and I agree, I mean, we're, we're making all, throwing out suggestions that are adding to the burden of the person who's already taken on this. So I don't, I don't, I don't think that's our role. Um, for, and for me, this, this comes above fireworks for me, quite honestly, the importance of this event to the town. So if we're, if we're fun, the, the extent to which we're funding fireworks is to me rises above that. Um, but I do wanna comment on the payments to the schools, I'm surprised, I didn't realize we were still doing that. And I think it's time for a conversation, I guess, with, with superintendent's office, I guess, about the philosophy of that. I mean, the, the small amounts going to each school, I don't think makes any difference. The schools are gonna continue to put together their floats, you know, parents are digging into their pockets.
Yeah, seventy-five dollars per school is really not that much difference, but.
Yeah, five hundred dollars for the band there.
But for the band, you're absolutely right. Alright, I'll do, I'll, I'll, you know, we're not gonna make any full loan decisions here, other than, I think, we sort of have consensus that we're gonna fund it.
Yeah.
To the degree that it needs to be funded, but we're gonna explore the opportunities to continue to have uh, private fundraisers, private donations. Uh, private or, uh, private donations.
How many people are on your committee at this?
Six. We, we have fifteen more people that helped the day of the parade. They're doing the, the work to make sure the parade gets lined up and they help judge, so they, they are just there that one day.
What would you think of expanding that committee, let's say by three additional people? With the specific role of fundraising or development, whatever word you wanna use. Hey, I don't know if that's appropriate for a town committee to have that specific duty.
Um, I could talk to, I could check repeat on that.
It just seems a little strange.
Uh, well, it's not, it's not in ordinance, this is an ad hoc committee.
Oh, okay.
It is not, it is not created in an ordinance.
Okay, maybe.
This is similar to the affordable housing working that we have.
And I know Parking Rec runs the fireworks and they just ask for donations or?
No, they're doing it out of program funds now, so that's, you know, that, that's out of program funds.
They do get donations.
Uh, they have in the past, yes.
The year that they were not going to have it, private citizens donated to put it on.
Yeah.
I, I think it, it would be not, not very easy to ask people, people to, to three more, find three more people to be on the committee. To just fundraise, um, uh, especially this year, um, most of the. Uh, just men, mu- much of the discussion at each meeting was how we were gonna get enough money. And it really made all of us tired of working on this.
Don't have that discussion, Marcus, you know, he will find a way, but I don't know what the mechanics of that way are. But uh, that's what I was trying to say earlier, I, you know, I would support the town underwriting it all. Uh, I don't know if I'm quite there of just saying that taxpayers are gonna write a blank check. Uh, but I, I do think we have the responsibility to, to find a way that the parade continues.
If, if we don't pay the schools, um, uh, then our, our budget is only, we're only asking for three thousand more than what you're doing. And uh, this, this year, this year we limited the number of Fife and Drum Corps, we had less money. And we'd found last year, letting everybody come who wanted to, it, it al- also made it difficult to plan the parade. Because you have, can't have the musicians right next to each other, that defeats the purpose. So we made it definitely, a- and we, we can continue to do, to do that, our website says that we can limit. We, we turned away one, one group this year because we had reached the number that we were willing to pay for. So we would be more than happy to stick within whatever budget the town says.
De, 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 do you think that also if we can get the schools issue resolved?
Yeah.
Finally, there was one year that uh, Rotary did not pay the elementary schools, that was two thousand nineteen. And that's actually to the P T Os. Um, a- and then resolve whether the bands need that or does the band's support need to come out of the Board of Ed budget or something? It's just that adds a variable on us that, to fundraise.
Yeah, you just took words out of my mouth, I was just gonna suggest, you know, talking to uh, Board Ed regarding their budgeting. And just like where we, I, I'm prepared to include in the town budget some funding for this. And perhaps Board Ed could also.
I think each of the years that the, uh, our committee has existed, we've discussed, should we pay the schools, should we not pay the schools? Is it, is it okay if we're a town committee paying and they were, you know?
Your committee should, in my mind, your committee should just no longer discuss the budget part of it.
That would be wonderful.
Find a number that, you know, this is the number and that's it.
That would be wonderful.
But uh, that's my attitude.
Do we have any idea of, you know, for what purpose those funds are being used by the, by the schools? Are we talking about scholarships for kids for music, for kids who can't afford to buy clothing?
Uniforms and uh, instruments, uh, yeah, those are the two main ones that get funded.
I mean, that seems appropriate for a Board Ed budget, in my mind.
This money goes into and out of so many different pockets, taxes, who's paying, you know, it's just churning around. Doesn't seem like it really follows.
Alright, I will work both with the schools and also work to craft a letter to those who have contributed in the past. And asking for their consideration and commitment for funding uh, going forward, if that's an annual.
Or maybe, you know.
Process we can, uh, prior to each.
About a board, it's like an open letter?
Well, we have, we have, we have the press, we have the press online uh, right now. I have a suspicion that I will probably gonna follow a call about this issue um, at, at some point. So we can certainly get some publicity.
But I do think that one message that I'd like to send to your committee is that you can find a way.
Right, and obviously we're placing a, the level of importance on this event that most likely was superseding any other event. That someone may come to this board looking for funding for. Uh, we have a new parade in town, um, that started this year, um, we have not funded them. Uh, so uh, this is, uh, this, this is opening up uh, a, a set of discussions relative to uh, the town funding. What are largely private uh, enterprises. What I find interesting is the Agriculture Society used to run this show by themselves. Uh, and, you know, they, they've fallen, uh, you know, subject to a lot of the same pressures of every organization. Lack of volunteers, lack of resources, but you know, quite honestly, um, I would suspect that the, given the weather for the last two fairs. The coffers are pretty full, let's go for the agricultural society now, one bad year uh, could put a significant dent to that. But uh, I, I know that there's, they are still contributing uh, at five, at uh, five hundred. At one point it was two thousand dollars or twenty-two hundred at its peak, so.
Yeah, I was surprised years ago when I learned that it actually is not a Ag Society parade. And that's when the Citizen State Parade became.
Right. Alright, we'll take those steps, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I thought that Matt was saying that he was gonna reach out to all.
Good, sure.
Uh, Matt, do you want me to work with you, I'm normally the reach out for all those people, so.
Give me your, give me your normal contacts at all those organizations that have uh, have contributed in the past and will reach out to them.
Okay.
To the Selectman's Office.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I don't wanna just immediately assume responsibility for this without having.
Yeah, that's a blank check thing, we gotta be careful of that. But I do wanna work towards finding a way.
Right.
But one, one, one thought is to, you know, to get, get a sense of what's still happening and what's possible. And come up with a fixed number and sort of, that puts a little pressure on this committee. But it also puts pressure on the outside sources to just know that the balance still has to come in.
That's, you know, working on this specific budget for this particular parade. I think what we, we'd like to find is a long-term systemic plan forward.
Sure, the problem is these private organizations, you can't lock them in year over year.
I was gonna say, like Rotary, um, it's a different board every year and I, I, I believe, I think I can speak and say Rotary will continue to support it. But they're gonna, they're gonna consider it every year, you know what I mean?
Well, then, then a letter goes out from the Selectman's Office every October or November.
Yeah.
Um, indicating that we're going into budget season and we need to ascertain their commitment level for the following year.
Yeah.
But, cause by the way, most of them, and probably sooner rather than later, because their budgets start January one, not July one. So uh, you know, we seem to think, oh, we've got a lot of time on this, but that's not necessarily the case. Okay.
And just Sue, as you counted, at, at the, at the top, on the top of twenty twenty-three, six thousand two hundred twenty-five. At the bottom of twenty twenty-three, does that mean that that's, they, they have some existing money in their account?
Yes, it does.
So they almost have the cost of the parade there, but they don't wanna get their account down to zero.
Yeah, if I wanna keep it.
But once again, like the, like a mini program account, how much do they need to keep from year to year, you know what I mean?
Right, that's right.
Um, I, I realize they gotta keep something, but it doesn't have to be that much.
Very good point, yeah, right.
And what I, what I wanna be very careful about is that this doesn't turn into a town government-run parade. And it's, okay, so wanna continue to encourage the volunteer nature of this uh, event. Because we don't have somebody who's got the bandwidth to do that kind of work here, uh, we could certainly find somebody, uh, but that's. Well, we can, but we can.
What's it called, creep or something?
Yes, yeah, scope creep, exactly. Alright, well, I think it's, it's, it's well worth the effort, we, I have, the consensus here is that we will find funding. Uh, with, over and above whatever we can, uh, get from.
I think it's like, you, you, one of you, Charles or you, um, it's, you know, I, I never, I knew for a long time. Because of my connection to the bank, that the bank gave quite a bit of money towards the parade and I knew that that was gonna dwindle. But I didn't really think who was paying for it or how much it cost, you know what I mean? You don't think of those things until you have to think about them.
But yeah, and the school thing is strange, I mean, that, that's.
Alright, um, next up is item number nine. Act on a request from the Guilford Garden Club to place a sign on the green advertising its Christmas critique taking place December one, twenty twenty-three. Uh, sign placement eleven seventeen to twelve one, uh, is there a motion?
Still moves.
A second.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, uh, let me try your. Hearing none, let me try your minds, Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Item ten, committee reports.
I don't have a, I don't have anything more to add to the Affordable Housing Committee update. I think I gave a rather lengthy one two weeks ago. We're having a meeting next week, so probably have something to record after that.
And also Sandy, myself, Pete, and Christie Rubens have been working through drafts of the Affordable Housing Commission, its charge, et cetera, to create to to create it in ordinance. And then secondly, the document creating the Guilford Affordable Housing Trust Fund and who who has the responsibility to manage those those funds. Pete has two, I think, pretty pretty close to complete working drafts that shared with both Sandy and Christie. And actually, we're scheduled to meet on it after after this meeting, so to talk about the particulars. So we'll get there.
We're getting there, yeah.
We're good. Now, and one of the reasons we need to get there sooner rather than later, although, is that the recently adopted zoning code includes the fee in lieu of the opt-out on affordable housing. So that fee in lieu of is part of the zoning code right now. Now, the easy part is setting up an internal service fund to have the money go to that fund, right? The the more difficult part is how do you figure out how to pull it out? And when do you pull it out, you know? If if there's only twenty-five thousand, there's not enough incentive to help another nonprofit developer, so we'll see. Okay. Any other committees? I don't think so. Correspondents, anybody have anything on correspondents? None? Okay. That's okay. You'll be quoted in a newspaper of local circulation soon.
I know. It's already something in patch.
Great, old business. New business. Public forum, anyone wishing to address the?
Did we, did we miss the the two fifty anniversary or that?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, you're right, seven A. Thanks, Lou.
Sure.
Well, it's now, whatever, it's now twelve A. But the, I I wanted to share this with you, just so that we can start to get some awareness in the in the community at large. And this is, the United States will actually, the United States of America will be markets two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the signing and declaration of independence on July fourth, twenty twenty-six. And the America Two Hundred and Fifty Connecticut Committee, which is chaired by former Secretary of State Denise Merrill, a Jason Nancini, and the Honorable Governor Ned Lamont. And this this suggests that we should put a committee together because there will be funding opportunities available to those communities that actually put together a a committee and plan a series of events and or activities or commemorations, whatever it might be. So I just wanted to share this with you, get it in the public domain. We will put something up on our website. And again, I suspect I'll have the opportunity to speak to reporters, local reporters on this. And we'll 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 start to get this rolling. I know, you know, several years ago, we did the three hundred and fiftieth, and that was a grassroots kind of organization. And, you know, despite the fact that, we're lamenting the fact that the Guilford Fair Parade Committee can't get enough volunteers. But I think we'd probably be able to to get some volunteers. And I would suggest that I'm gonna share this with all three of the major parties in town now, the Republican, the Independent Democratic Party, because I think this is an issue that transcends the politics. Would like to see them as part of this as well. That make sense?
Sounds good.
Lou, thanks for keeping us honest on the agenda.
I know this is a letter for Connecticut, but it's just other states too?
Yeah, this is a national, national effort that's going on. So I think there's, I I believe there's some federal money that gets passed, that's gonna get passed down to the states on this.
Semi-quinsentennial.
How do you say it?
Semi. Semi-quinsentennial.
Quinsentennial, oh boy.
Two hundred and fifty.
I like it. All right. Thanks, Lou. Anything else? Hearing none, public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Going once, going twice? Three times? Okay. Actually, I have one item of new business I wanna talk to, I'll talk to you guys a little bit about. And this is as it relates to retention, attraction and retention of employees, particularly on the EMT, the paramedic EMT side. The the challenges of getting a certified paramedic these days are significantly greater than they used to be, the number of hours needed, which is usually done by the individual prior to us hiring the individual. So it's a prerequisite that you have either a paramedic or an EMT. So we have had some conversations with the, with Minister, with the the chief and the deputy chief. We've also had some conversations with the union representation in terms of what we might be able to do to retain, attract and retain some of our employees because we are, we are being raided, so to speak, by those communities who have a different level of benefits that accrue to the firefighter, paramedics and firefighter EMTs. So we've opened up, we haven't gone, we're not in, we haven't opened the contract up. What we're doing is talking about, starting to talk about the various aspects of our benefit plan versus what's available in the larger, in the other communities that are looking to take some of our, some of our employees, looking to move towards. So we're probably, I'm gonna talk to the Board of Finances about this this evening. Probably put together an ad hoc committee, representative from this board, representative from the Fire Commission, representative from Board of Finances, HR, and to start to talk about what's within the realm of possibilities. And it's largely around, you know, medical benefits, post-employment medical benefits, and to some degree, the defined benefit plans versus defined contribution plan. So we need to have the conversation because we are at risk of losing employees, which we have made some pretty significant investments in, and to bring someone up to speed who is new, takes that kind of, that another level of training. So we're starting, we're gonna gonna start those conversations.
We don't have, and I don't mean this in a negative way, firefighters now are not just firefighters, they all, they all are either.
Firefighter, paramedic, or firefighter EMT. And I think as you probably recall from our budget discussions, at at our discussions around it, that that model is probably the most appropriate because most of the calls are medical related. They're not fire specific or accidents, they're they're medical related. So that's the, that's that's the opportunity I think we have in front of us. So I'll report, Ward, Wardico. Anything else?
I did, when I, when I raised that question about the balance in the parade account, I realized on the last paragraph on the second page of their explanation, they addressed that. And they said, if the town took it over, they would use some, do some one-time expenses with it and then turn the balance over to to the town under, it's under additional information for both proposals. So they were, they were cognizant of that, so just.
Well, one, one of the things that, be careful what you ask for. If we're gonna be funding this, they're gonna be reporting to us how much autonomy would we be giving them relative to decisions about vests and those kind of things. All right, where they have to come to us on an annual basis and say, this is what we would, this is this is our budget for the year. You know, that's the law of the ten consequences, I think, right? All right, anything further? Nothing for, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
Let me try your minds, Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Aye. And in the room? Aye, that motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.